Good evening, this is the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. Today is July 22, 2024 at 6:00 PM. It's our monthly meeting for July. I'm calling the meeting to order and I see that our Zoom is functioning. We'll start with a moment of prayer by Commissioner Smith. Goodbye, our heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you this day to do the work of your people. You've given us charge of them and as stewards of their resources. Help us to be wise, help us to be brave, and bless us, bless this meeting, and bless the people of Livingston County. Amen. Would you all stand kindly for the Pledge of Allegiance? Remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Naka Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
For him as present.
Thank you kindly. Next on our agenda is item number five, approval of agenda.
So move Deaton. Second Sample.
Moved by Deaton, second by Sample, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Domas, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that we remove the two of the issues on the agenda, the one referring to the presentation by Brighton Hospital, and then the closed session at the end of the meeting.
Those would be, for the record, 11 sub A and 15. Does everyone understand the motion? If so, all those by voice vote kindly say aye if you're in support.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is hereby amended, removing 11A and removing 15. Item number six. Now we go back, excuse me, now we go back and we approve the amended agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the amended?
Ooh.
I'm hearing.
I had that by Commissioner Deaton, seconded by Commissioner Sample.
Thank you. We're voting on that one then, the amended. All those voice vote kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous. Number six on the meeting agenda. We have 6A, correspondents from Crawford County, 6B, correspondents from Eaton County, and Correspondence C from Genesee County. Can I get a motion on all three?
Motion to receive and place on file all correspondence.
Second Deaton.
Moved by Fiani, seconded by Deaton. All those in favor of placing on file, kindly say aye in a voice vote.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, that passes also. We are at item number seven A. That is an employee recognition matter. Would Kathy Rosenberg and Director Felpoche please come forward?
This is a certificate of recognition proudly presented to Kathy Rosenberg.
Excuse me, Commissioner, we cannot hear you on Zoom.
Thank you. The Livingston County Board of Commissioners acknowledges their appreciation to Kathy Rosenberg for, that's a hard last name for me.
Me too.
For 32 years of service devoted to the county's emergency medical services department. Throughout her career, Kathy has managed EMS front office expertly and truly became the heart of the organization. She has been the glue that's kept everything and everyone together. Her tireless work ethic and commitment to providing top-tier service to those who serve has been invaluable and inspiring. Her impact at Livingston County reached to beyond her office because of her calming presence and problem-solving abilities. She earned the respect of everyone she worked with and provided them with the sense that their work was incredibly vital. Due to her unconditional support of the EMS department, she was recognized with the Star of Life Award at the Michigan State Capitol. It's a fact that our community has been a safer and healthier place because of Kathy's contributions. Therefore, let it be known that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes and expresses their deepest appreciation to Kathy Rosenberg for her dedication to keeping EMS running like a well-oiled machine for the last 32 years. The management systems you have put in place and your lasting sense of teamwork will continue to make a positive impact for residents and county employees for years to come. Dated today's date, signed by Board of Commissioners. Kathy, congratulations.
A few thousand words from the director?
Everybody that knows me knows I don't have a few thousand words. We've only had the privilege of working with Kathy for the last four years, but the words on there are extremely true. Nothing comes in and out of the EMS office without Kathy touching it somehow. And she's been the glue that's held this department together through a lot of really rough times. So I can't thank Kathy enough for everything she's done, and y'all didn't come here to listen to me, so have a great night.
You're allowed to speak. You're allowed.
I don't have anything to say other than thank you for accepting me into the county for all these years.
You gonna have her come up for?
No, go to the left.
Oh, record her. Please, Kathy, back up.
Come on up here.
This is no talking.
Oh.
We need a short person.
How am I gonna fit? I'm so tall. Okay.
Go. There you go. One, two, three. I take a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Get everybody. You do it fine.
Next item on the agenda is number eight, call to the public. At the beginning, we have a three-minute max call to the public. If you haven't already turned in a card, please do so to our clerk. She will call you by name, and we also need your place of residence. And we ask that you be seated and comfortable at the table near a microphone. Please.
Reverend Charles R. Burrows from Fowlerville, followed by Zach from Howell or Genoa. And Zach, I'm sorry, I'm having a difficult time with your last name. Does that? Okay. Jokers.
When you're seated and comfortable, you may begin.
Thank you, I appreciate the time. I felt that it was important that some words be said that might explain the background for someone that works very hard, not just in the community, but in the state. Roger Deaton. Roger Deaton has been given the honor of being a Veteran of the Year. Roger Deaton has supported veterans in this state for some 30 years. He has gone above and beyond helping not just veterans, but those of us in the community that are in need, that may fall down at times. We all know the hard times with this economy that everybody goes through. And he's the man that calls and says, are you okay? While he's just left a veteran's post that has burned down and he's on the way to see somebody else who may be a little bit invalid, and he calls you and says, if you need something, let me know, I will be there. There was a void in the community. I'm a veteran. I'm a Vietnam vet. And it needs to be recognized what he has done for vets. Not only has he grown up through the ranks of helping and being arbiters at posts, but when the call went out in Brighton that there was a void, he says, I'm gonna see what I can do to fill that void for vets. He's provided a home for a ragtag group of guys that had fallen between the cracks and weren't being recognized and were a bit lost. He called me six months ago, six, seven months ago, and said, hey, this is what I've been working on for the last year. Not the last few days, the last year to put together. It's fallen apart, fell down. Yes, Roger, I know about that. Can you help me? What do you need? I will never turn him down because of the work that I see him doing. Try and catch up with the money, man on a Sunday morning, it's not gonna happen. He's in church. Try and get ahold of him when he's in Bible study, it ain't gonna happen. He's a religious man. I respect that. I respect his priorities. The same thing he does for vets, he does here in the community. And it's not recognized enough. I know because of when he said, do you know of others? Oh, boy, do I. He says, do you think that they would come? I called him, I said, hey, guys, Roger has provided a new home for us. Let's go check it out.
Thank you, sir. You're just a little bit over.
But that's what I had to say, let's go check it out. And it's been wonderful, and I'm grateful. Thank you, sir.
Zach from Howell, Genoa Township.
Zach, when you're seated and comfortable, tell us your last name and then your timer start.
My last name is Jokers.
Got it, thank you.
So I'm gonna read from my phone, I hope you guys understand. So ladies and gentlemen, the board and members of the community, my name is Zach Jokers and I'm a resident of District Six in Genoa Township. Today is both an honor and a privilege to be before you in unwavering support of my friend Roger Deaton and his reelection as Livingston County, excuse me, Livingston County District Six Commissioner. Roger has not only dedicated public service, but also a decorated veteran, friend, and mentor to me and many others. His life is a testament to commitment, honor, and service. Under Roger's exemplary leadership, our township has seen significant advancements in local infrastructure, economic development, and community well-being. His unparalleled dedication has been the driving force behind these transformations. Roger has faced every challenge with steadfast resolve, always prioritizing the needs and voices of the residents. As a veteran, Roger embodies the principles of duty, courage, and sacrifice. These qualities have been the foundation of his tenure as our District Six Commissioner. He has tirelessly advocated for all residents, ensuring that every concern is heard and addressed. Roger's strategic vision and decisive actions have consistently propelled our community forward. Voting against Roger would be turning away from the progress and values he has passionately upheld. It would mean ignoring the countless hours he has devoted to making District Six a place of prosperity, safety, and unity. Roger's reelection is not merely a continuation of his work, it's a reaffirmation of our collective, excuse me, our collective commitment to a brighter future. The stakes are high and the choice is clear. Commissioner Roger Deaton is the leader we need. One who has proven time and again, he will fight for us, he will stand for us, and he will lead us towards continued success. Let us demonstrate our unwavering support for Commissioner Deaton and ensure his rightful reelection as District Six Commissioner. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Doug Helserman, Handy Township, followed by Lauren Petrell from Howell.
I think the applause cut into your first announcement of who should come out.
Doug Helserman, Handy Township, followed by Lauren Petrell.
Commissioner, Commissioner, you don't have to go to the table if you choose not to. You have a choice.
Hi, I'm Doug Helserman from Handy Township. I, with the recent Republican Convention and the upcoming Democrat Convention.
Commissioner Helserman, we're having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if the mic is off or you're not speaking into it, but if you could try to speak into it, that'd be great.
Am I too close to the mic?
No, not close.
It's not close enough, my goodness. Okay. I thought I was, I thought I was speaking loud, I apologize. Anyways, with the Republican Convention that just happened, the Democrat Convention, I read scripture, at least some every day. And these verses came to me, and I thought they were fitting. This is the Apostle Peter speaking to an errant Christian. And he said, "Oh, full of subtlety, all mischief, thou child of the devil, thou evil of all righteousness, thou wilt not cease to prefer the right ways of the Lord." That was said to a Christian. Okay? But I am thinking that these principles should be applied to our body politic. We need to make sure that we do not use subtle words, that we're not for mischief, that we're not a liar, that the devil's, the child of the devil means that you are like your father. And the devil is a liar. The only thing that he can do is lie. Even when he says things that are factually true, he says it with just a little twist to make the conclusion a lie. We need to look out for people that are enemy of what's right. We need to look out for people who who twist what's natural and pervert the things that are not right. The Bible is not a political book. It is not Republican or Democrat. It is not left or right. It is what I would say, up and down. The up meaning truth and good, the down being lies and evil. As you, this is my challenge to each of you and to myself, as you compare the two parties' conventions, may God give you and us insight so that we know what is the truth. Because the Bible says, ye shall know the truth, and the truth shall make you free. Thank you. Thank you.
Lauren Petrell from Howell, followed by Rob Rodriguez Palazzari.
It's Lauren Petrell.
Petrell.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here today, this evening. It really is quite an honor to be sitting here in front of each of you and all of you. I kind of feel like I should be standing. I did not repair a written remark. But I can tell you that in the grand scheme of things, I'm not that important. I'm important to my father in heaven. I'm important to my friends and my family who loves me. But I'm just one of many fish. I take my dedication to my country, however, very seriously. I'm a veteran of the Marine Corps. I have four children, two grown. I'm a catechist. And I work in a church, and I'm a teacher. And that's what I do. And no matter how hard life is, I try to do good. I try to do well. I've campaigned for a few people on this board. And I'm just so proud of you, each and every single one of you. Thank you. Thank you for your failings that you've learned from. Thank you for your successes. And on behalf of my friend Roger Deaton, I would like to say that I think this is the greatest country in the world. And Livingston County has been home to me for a while. The Revolutionary War, there was a ship called the Bonham Richard. It was named after Benjamin Franklin by Captain John Paul Jones. And he had a horrible head injury, and he was wounded. And when the British came aboard to take him away, they said, do you have any last words? And he said, yeah, I have not yet begun to fight. That's you, you're Captain John Paul Jones. You've done so much good in this county and for families, and I see it. And while I'm not that important, I love you, and I love this country. God bless the United States and Trump 2024, baby.
Rob Rodriguez Palazzari from Brighton, Michigan, followed by Bill Reiber.
Can everybody hear me okay? Commissioners, I come before you tonight as Rob Rodriguez Palazzari, Livingston County resident and voter. Not as part of any organization that I currently am in or have been in before. I'm a solid Republican. I believe in Republican values. I believe in less government, lower taxes, and self-responsibility. For almost two years, I've observed this board make decisions on behalf of the country, or I'm sorry, the county. And I'll say that as a Republican, I'm incredibly proud of each and every one of you. In every vote, you've taken seriously your responsibility to the taxpayers of this county. You've governed wisely, not to throw around our money foolishly or use it on unsustainable programs. During the last couple of months, I've unfortunately watched and listened to challengers attempt to dismerge some of my colleagues that I know very, very well. And these allegations, I just find untrue. And that's why I'm here today. As a Republican leader, I'm discouraged on the behavior of my fellow Republicans talking ill of each other instead of talking what is wonderful about them. That's the actual exchange that we have in this democracy that we live in. We're supposed to be talking about what we do best. That's what I challenge each and every one of my Republican brothers and sisters to do. To those commissioners here that are being challenged right now. Wes Naka Gary, I thank you for being a taxpayer's watchdog. I know of nobody who has dug in deeper and uncovered more truths than you have, point blank. I always know that I can count on you for fiscal responsibility and to find that needle in a haystack that we need to be looking at as far as our county's concerned. Commissioner Roger Deaton, for your deep commitment to the country, especially to our veterans, I personally watched multiple instances where you put our vets first above yourself. I know that you have the dedication, well-being of our vets, and it's very humbling to watch all the efforts that you put forward. Don't cry, I'm just saying, this is a big deal. And we appreciate your efforts. And also, let's not forget public safety, you've done a lot for public safety too. And for you, Commissioner Drick, your incredible attention to detail, I know of nobody else that is so incredible in detail. You'll find a single point in a 100-page poison pill contract that we need to review. And it's a good thing you are the way that you are. Otherwise, Livingston County wouldn't be in the position that they're in. And to the rest of you commissioners, thank you very much for everything that you do every day for us. God bless you all.
Bill Reiber from Genoa Township, followed by Anna Marie Rodriguez Palazzari.
Test, test, test. First of all, I watched the Republican National Convention. Wes, I gotta say, I was looking for a fluorescent hat or flash or something. Anyways, it was a great convention. And thank you to the Board of Commissioners for all that you do. Our country is in excellent shape due to your fiscal, or county in excellent shape due to your fiscal responsibility and experience in problem solving. Tonight, I specifically want to give a shout out to Roger Deaton for all his hard work for our veterans community, not only in Livingston County, but across the state of Michigan. I have recently seen Commissioner Deaton's opponent's attack on his veteran's service. On a side note, it's very interesting that this opponent suddenly has found concerns for veterans that she has not demonstrated in the past. I'd like to highlight just a few of Commissioner Deaton's efforts. He volunteers his time to the Livingston County Veterans Court, mentoring veterans who have been incarcerated. He works with them on a four-step program to help them get off and stay off drugs and alcohol. He spends 15 hours a week on average volunteering to assist his fellow veterans. Roger served on the committee too and helped raise funds for the Howell Veteran Memorial Monument. He's co-hosted and co-sponsored a send-off breakfast for the American Legion's Boys State Program. He started and currently serves the Director of the American Legion Riders in Brighton. He started the Public Service Awards in the Brighton American Legion to recognize firefighters, police, and teachers. He has worked with American Legions around the state, helping them with lawsuits and membership issues. These are just a few of his efforts, and these are just the efforts for this year. He has been helping veterans in volunteering his time as a member and in various officer positions to numerous to mention for the past 33 years. Commissioner Deaton's longtime devotion to veterans recently earned him the American Legion's Most Prestigious Award. He was named Michigan American Legion Legionnaire for the year 2024. Thank you, Roger. I find it sickening that someone who has served the American Legion for the past 30 years could be so harshly and unfairly attacked by someone who has been a member for a whopping, I don't know, month, 30 days. His opponent has coincidentally decided to take an interest during a time when she is running for office. And when August 7th arrives, nobody will be surprised when her sudden interest fades. Commissioner Deaton, commissioners, thank you for your service. Thank you for keeping Livingston County a great place to live.
Anna Marie Rodriguez Palazzari from Brighton, followed by David Pickett.
Hi, commissioners. First, I just want to say thank you for all of your support and everything you're doing as President of Two Way Patriot. I can't thank you enough, especially for your support with the constitutional county. That is absolutely amazing, and I hope more counties continue to follow in that path that you guys have started. I'm here because I have listened to some of the female challengers say that they should be voted in because they are women and mothers. And being a woman and a mother, I don't find that the qualifications for being on the board. They're great things, they're amazing, I love it. But it should be on the merits of what they can do and will do and have done for our county like you guys have, not just that. If that's their passion, maybe the PTO is a great place for them to exercise it. But I really don't feel that this is the place, and I hope that the other voters also see that that is flawed logic for a reason to be in a position in an office like you guys have been. Thank you so much.
David Pickett from Howell, followed by Julia Zwan.
Hello, guys. David Pickett from Howell, Michigan, voting member, District Six.
David Pickett from Howell, Michigan, voting member, District Six. I know the first time ever being at one of these meetings, by the way. And it was due to some different things I've heard and read. And I know that it's very easy, because I've been elected official in the past in different organizations, to go out and say a lot of things and run for that position, criticize the current administration. And that's not leadership in my word, not at all. I want to thank all of the commissioners, the leadership that you've all shown the last few years. That's what a current board is supposed to do. You're working as a team to help our community stay safe, keep our taxes low, and still providing great programs for all of us members. It's nice to see when you guys are communicating to each other, working your concerns out together. But at the end of the day, we benefit from that. And you guys put so much effort, so many hours into doing that. For you just must love us, is all I can say. And I'd like to point out, as quite a few people going last like this, they take a lot of the words that I've already prepared from Commissioner Deaton, my friend. He's worked tirelessly in so many different ways for not only the veterans, but all the broadband stuff. You talk about the schools. You talk about how many trips he goes and does with his own money, own time, mentoring the veterans. And I'm just glad and proud to be his friend. And I ask you to please support every one of these commissioners in the upcoming election so they continue with their job that they've been doing so efficiently. Thank you for your time, Joan.
Julia Zwang from Howell, followed by Joni Econom.
Hi. So I'm a little shaky, so don't mind, but.
Get a little closer to the microphone.
I would just like to point out to my stepfather, Roger. I just want to say that even though if we go out of state or whatever, he's always going on, checking veterans, how are you? What are you doing? And normal people may work a nine-to-five shift, but Roger wakes up every morning at three in the morning to start working. Don't cry. Waking up at three in the morning to check how people are doing and work on his work. I just want to say thank you and I love you.
Joni Econom from Osceola Township, followed by Michelle Herbert.
That's going to be a tough one to follow. Okay? So could we all have a moment? I'm going to make this very short. I wish to thank each and every one of you. I am so proud to live in this county with you as our commissioners. Commissioner Smith, I understand you're not running. So I I wish you all the best in whatever journey is next for you. For those of you that are currently running, I pray you retain these seats. I'm fortunate to have Wes as my commissioner. He's made me very proud. We've been out here since 1979. We've seen a lot of changes. This has been the best, and it's yet to come. Thank you all. Before I leave, I'd like to thank our county clerk. She's done a fabulous job.
Michelle Herbert from Genoa Township, followed by Stephanie Miklos.
Good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to come tonight to express my gratitude as well. We've been in a lot of fights over the last, fighting for our community over the last four years, whether it's schools, you know, masking, whatever it's been. It's been a challenge. And you've been very supportive to stand up for people's individual rights, and I'm very grateful. And I've been made aware recently that a lot of you are trying to help in the homeschool department, because I know that's going to be coming under attack soon. So that touches my heart and my family, so I'm very grateful for that. Just wanted to thank you all for all that you do and all the time that you put in. Very grateful. Thank you.
Stephanie Miklos from Howell, followed by Colleen Quinn.
I just want to say that I'm not really grateful of intermingling politics with religion. I've really, I find it offensive, too, given the number of lies I've heard from many of you. And the other thing is, you all invited Shane Trejo, a known white supremacist, to the Opera House in February. You've invited an evil into this county, and it's become evident when we have white supremacists demonstrating. It's been in all the local news channels. So I do not thank you for that whatsoever. I'm not a MAGA Trump cult member. I would never vote for a pack of lies.
Oh, yeah, and here's another thing. I, you know, I spoke at the Constitutional County meeting. It's all recorded by Channel 7 News, interrupted by these idiots back here. And I'm not going to put up with it. It's my free speech right. It's my free minutes. Yeah, go ahead, don't kick them out. Let them do what they want, because they're all praising you up here. I find it reprehensible. You had a group of clowns. Some of them are gone now, but most of them are still there. And I'm allowed to call Shane Trejo a white supremacist based on his actions. And also, law enforcement, yeah, they said they have their right to free speech. Well, thank God the library kicked him out because it's private property. You have invited evil into the county. And I'm not going to let your pistol-packing people come here and threaten me because I have a different opinion. I tried to talk to them downstairs. They all surrounded me, no security, no sheriff. This did happen. None of you will acknowledge it or even say anything to that effect. And I don't expect you to hear, but no one ever reached out to say, hey, this shouldn't have happened. We should have conducted our meetings like a normal commissioners meeting. However, you mix this Christian nationalism into stuff which has nothing to do with religion. You might as well call yourself an atheist if you're going to call Trumpism a religion. It's not. It's a way to try to control people. And I see it clearly. I'm sorry that other people don't. But, you know, just because you don't agree with 40% of the people, or probably way more in this county, doesn't mean you don't represent us. And we are patriots. I tell you that. Oh, yeah, Karen, good one.
Colleen Quinn, Genoa Township, followed by Lisa Rosmanerwich.
Good evening. I want to thank the board for all you have done for this county. And I want to echo many of the prior comments, except for the person that just preceded me. I don't agree with anything that was said. You guys have had the courage to take unified and tough stands that protect our constitutional freedoms. And as a citizen, that is my main request of government, to honor the Constitution. My direct commissioner, Commissioner Roger Deaton, has been accessible and responsive to my concerns. His work with the veterans has been commendable and distinguished, sorry. And all the commissioners on this current board have just been outstanding. I can't thank you enough because, as I think it was Michelle said, we had some rocky years, and we had some other commissioners, and we had medical freedom issues. And now with this current board, it's been, it's been wonderful. So I'm also hoping that our local media will cover some of your positive work and these positive comments, because they seem to revel in covering the drama and so forth and the divisiveness. And they overreact to it, I guess. I also appreciate your fiscal responsibility. And I really hope the citizens of Livingston County reelect the incumbents that are running. Good luck to you, Commissioner. And again, we are so fortunate. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Lisa Rosmanerwich from Hamburg, followed by Janine Eyre.
Good evening, commissioners. I came here to say thank you as well. And I just wanted to read, and you all know, and most people in this room hopefully know, that our founding fathers believed in the importance of religion and morality, including George Washington, Patrick Henry and John Adams. In fact, John Adams said that our Constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other. So we're all, everyone who's here, you're here because we have the Constitution. You're here, you can freely speak because you have the Constitution. And I know you guys all swore an oath to the Constitution. And I so appreciate the fact that you are upholding your oath that you took, supporting the Constitution for our freedoms. I've been sitting in this room for the last four years, and I am so proud of everything that you guys have done to support the people of this county, to maintain our conservative values, our family values, and our values of valuing freedom. And I just want to thank you, and I just pray that you all win your races. Thank you so much.
Janine Eyre, Genoa Township, followed by Deb Dreck.
Janine Eyre, resident of Genoa Township. This is my first time that I've been to the BOC meeting in several months. The reason is, is I have been very happy with how this board has conducted the business of the county. You have managed to add facilities, services and personnel, and maintained and upgraded county offices without increasing residents' taxes. And in fact, you have lowered them. This is so helpful with the high inflation we're currently experiencing. This board has members with finance and legal backgrounds, as well as business owners and experienced engineers. Most of you have had many years of public service and genuine care for this county and its residents. What I most appreciate about many of you is your connection, concern and responsiveness to your constituents. I will cite some examples. In September of 2023, I contacted my commissioner, Roger Deaton, to consider a health freedom resolution that I had drafted. He and another two commissioners edited it, and Roger talked to legal and the county health officer about it. Once the draft was ready, he brought it to the board's chair to put it on the agenda for discussion, and the chair agreed. During discussion, the motion was made to put the resolution for a vote, and this current board unanimously passed that health freedom resolution. Roger was also instrumental in negotiating for the money that was necessary to continue to deliver broadband to our rural areas. Roger's persistence in these situations was important to delivering for Livingston residents. Another example, this is Jay Drick. When the state of Michigan was offering money to the counties for COVID response, county residents' voice concerns that the vast majority of the money was to be dedicated to COVID shots for kids. In response to our concerns, Commissioner and attorney Jay Drick went through the state contract with a fine-tooth comb. During discussion, he exposed all the strings and stipulations in the contract that would be detrimental to the county and its residents. When the vote for approval was made, our board rejected the resolution to approve these funds with their strings. Our kids are safe because of Jay Drick's analysis and commentary of the contract. During COVID, parents had concerns over the school quarantine policy of sending healthy kids home from school for several days if they had possibly been exposed to COVID. Commissioner Wes Nakagiri was a strong voice in opposition to this policy. In fact, at one board meeting, he arranged to have a Brighton school mom give a testimony regarding this destructive policy. Wes showed solidarity with moms in regard to this bad school policy which put their kids behind. Wes also was instrumental in advocating and passing the formation of a health advisory board consisting of medical professionals from our community so that their voices could be heard. Commissioners, I thank you each for your excellent service to this county, and I hope and pray that you continue to do so in the coming years. Thank you.
Deb Dreck, City of Howell, followed by Madeline Thomas.
Good evening, commissioners. And I echo most of what I heard tonight. Thank you so much for everything you do. I'm here for a different reason. It is obvious to me, having sat here week after week, that the commissioners and the administration and the departments wanted to improve employee culture. They spent good money, reasonable money, but good money on a survey to their employees. They sent the employees to surveys, and they knew to get the best results, that they had to promise the employee comments would only be shared with the supervisor. They did not promise that the employee's name wouldn't be shared, or the employee's comments would be shared to anybody else, but it's only with the supervisor. But the last couple of months, I've heard time and time again, you criticized because you wouldn't produce the comments in a FOIA. These people have pressured you to break your promise and release their comments, the employees' comments, for their political gain. I will tell you, I don't start sentences off with this very, very rarely, if ever. But I have a master's degree in culture change leadership. And I will tell you that employee culture, changing employee culture, improving employee culture 101 is the word trust. And the employees have to trust. It relies 100% on trust. They have to trust that their leadership will keep their word. So they trusted you to keep your word to them, that your comments, their comments would not be released to anyone other than their supervisor. And so during pressure and even threats of lawsuit, you all kept your promise to them. That tells everyone your word is good, that people can count on your word. That's important. Those who pressured and threatened you to break your word, those actions tell us their word is meaningless, and that ought to be remembered by everybody. Thank you for everything you do, and thank you for keeping your word.
Madeline Thomas, Brighton Township. And that's the last card I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ma'am, when you see it uncomfortable, you may begin.
All right, hi, commissioners. Thank you for having me. As usual, last in line, stuck in the traffic. But anyways, I just want to let you know that I think I speak for the majority when I say, we like you guys. You guys have gone the extra mile. I've been watching for the last couple of years, and you're listening to what we're telling you. I mean, the resolutions about medical freedom, the resolution to not take the state money, to clot shot the kids. There's another one I can't think of. There's several of them that you've all been working on. And I greatly appreciate it and 100% behind the three commissioners running for reelection. I really appreciate your work. I also appreciate the fact that you're not throwing money around like the people in Lansing and Washington, D.C. are. So, and I'm also appalled and disgusted that people would actually get up here and attack and call you names, like corrupted, corrupted? Come on. I think we should grow up. So anyways, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you and 100% behind you.
I have no further cards.
No cards. Can we go to Zoom then?
Yes, Commissioner, I have iPad.
If the person designated iPad would please come on screen and then tell us your name and your residence. And you have free to talk. Go ahead.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Tricia Fessler from Heartland Township. I just want to say thank you for your service to our community. Also, for those that would stand with your constituents when it comes to the concerns so many of us had during COVID, by implementing ways to help not repeat the same mistakes that was made in the past and the future. I've had the privilege of sharing my concerns and personal experience with Commissioners Wes Nakagiri, Roger Deaton and Nick Fiani over the last couple of years. And we appreciate you all caring enough to listen to me. I want to give a special thank you to my Commissioner Wes Nakagiri for being instrumental in creating a new health advisory committee, where medical professionals in our area are able to help the board make better informed decisions. We must be forward-thinking during these uncertain times, and creating this new committee is doing just that. Thank you to all of you, those of you. Thank you to all of you, those of you who voted to approve this committee. And one last thing I would like to say is I started Heartland Voters, which represents many residents in the Heartland area. Heartland Voters has endorsed Wes Nakagiri for reelection as Commissioner because of the wonderful job that he has done. I am excited, along with many others, to cast my vote for him again in the primary election. Thank you all for all that you've done for our community. God bless you all.
Next, I have Denise O'Connell.
Denise, can you hear us?
I can, thank you. Hi, I'm Denise O'Connell from Heartland Township. And I just wanted to say, as you know, I've been very vocal over the years about the lack of attention to the SRS. That said, I want to sincerely thank the current Board of Commissioners for their help in creating the Health Advisory Board, the vote to not take the COVID response money from the state of Michigan with all of those strings attached. Wes Nakagiri is my Commissioner in District 4, and he deserves our vote on Primary Election Day, August 6. Commissioner Nakagiri is the budget hawk of the Board, Commissioner Deaton, the watchdog for our veterans, Commissioner Dreck, the watchman of the contracts that are brought before the Board. Our current Board of Commissioners were the first in the state to declare our county a sanctuary for the U.S. Constitution and the Second Amendment. It was in wake of the state legislature passing red flag laws and other restrictive gun laws. I implore the voters of Livingston County to vote for all our current Commissioners, and most especially those that have primary opponents. Trump 2024, thank you.
Next, I have Mary Wetalik.
Mary, can you hear us? Can we hear you?
Yes, that's Mary Wetalik.
And your residence?
Okay, Mary Wetalik. I live in Green Oaks Township.
Thank you.
Actually, I wanted to speak. Thank you. I wanted to speak about a few topics that were on the agenda. I didn't know I was going to witness this love fest. It was a little disgusting from my point of view, but that's okay. Actually, it was in regard to some of the correspondence. I noticed that this was the second correspondence regarding the Michigan, the Conservation Districts. I have read that the budget now includes, it keeps the $3 million in ongoing funds, and also the technicians will remain within the Conservation District. So just an update on that. I know somebody brought that up a couple of weeks ago as a concern, but I think the concern can be put to rest now. The other correspondence, which regards Michigan Department Health and Human Services, this is something that's close to me, so I was reading up on it. And it is of concern to me also, and I hope that we will look into it. There is a rule placed by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, and the rule is intended to mitigate conflicts of interest. And so it is good that the Department Health and Human Services look at this and try to make sure the rule is satisfied. However, the solution they came up with is overly complex, and the Community Mental Health Association of Michigan has made suggestions for other solutions to satisfy this requirement, and those should be investigated. I don't know if you will be looking into it or not, or if somebody is looking at mental health. Okay, so with my time I have left, I, you know, it's funny how that if we don't have this perfect Board, then it would be catastrophic. Somebody in a previous meeting said that it would be the coming of the days of judgment. And another said that the state of Michigan is being destroyed by the current administration. Just to that point, there's many things going on in Michigan that I'm quite happy about, that Michigan has removed the stranglehold on unions in our state so that they can more effectively bargain on behalf of their members. The state is removing barriers for individuals to tap into solar power. And lastly, the state is making an investment into our students by guaranteeing free tuition at community colleges. Many certificates and degrees at community colleges lead to good-paying jobs. And in regard to these constitutional county, our sheriff is using the law to do what needs to be done, and that is take away guns from people who are an imminent threat to themselves or somebody else. The reasonable law, and to go crazy makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, I have Cindy McNavish.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I don't know what I just witnessed. It seemed like a campaign rally. Each of the individuals does have the freedom of speech to speak at the Call of the Public, but I have a feeling, and I heard one of the Commissioners say that this would be happening at the Commissioner meeting today. So that's kind of organizing, and I don't think there should be any campaigning done at a public meeting like this. And in regards to the previous speaker, two speakers ago, about you not accepting the $150,000 grant for the Health Department, I just want the voters to know that right turned around, the Commissioners on this Board voted to take that $150,000 out of the budget to do the same thing. Thank you.
Next.
I have Steve W.
Hello. If you tell us where you're, tell us where you live, your last name, you can begin.
Sure, I'm here in township. My last name is Williams. I am Steve Williams. I'm not going to go in person today, but it would have been entertaining. I am here to bring some actual facts to this discussion. One being that regardless of what certain Commissioners say in their publicity materials, budgets have to be balanced in Michigan by law. The County Commission has to balance the budget. So that is not really something the Commissioners can take credit for as if they're doing it and nobody else is. It's the law. And also, they take credit for having the lowest millage rate in the state, which is great. I love that, except that there isn't a sitting Commissioner on the Board who had anything to do with establishing that millage rate. All they've done is not raised the millage rate, but then they have added some additional fees and things like that. So they can't take credit for that, but they do all the time. The other fact is, the county lawsuit that's being waged against the Board by the courts is going to cost us all tens of thousands of dollars, and that should never come to happen. If the Board was doing their job, we would not have this lawsuit. I don't know why this is so hard to understand. The longer it goes on, the longer it's going to cost us. And then a FOIA lawsuit will cost us even more. And it doesn't matter if you all made a promise, which you didn't really make anyway, but it's still an illegal promise. An illegal promise cannot be kept. And if you're sued, then we're going to have to pay, and then you're going to have to pay whoever sues the county for that. The Board is breaking its own rules. That is a fact. You are not supposed to address people during the Call of the Public. You are not supposed to wait until after people who spoke during the Call of the Public are gone and then attack them during a Board meeting. You are not supposed to use Board meetings for campaign events, as happened a couple of weeks ago when Bob Buzak came in and used it as a campaign event for him and two other Commissioners. You're using county public property to advance somebody's political career, and you're holding all the staff members hostage. I would be surprised if the Democrats don't actually file a complaint with the Secretary of State for that. And, you know, the Unions may decide to complain about that as well because you're keeping these people from coming home and yet forcing them to attend a political rally for your friends. Oh, what else do we have? Now, in terms of calling names, in terms of untruths, there is no reason why I can't come before the Board and call you out for lying. And, you know, we can't name Commissioners, but I have a daughter who's running for the Board.
You have 15 seconds remaining.
And whose opponent said she doesn't live where she lives, that she's not a legal resident of the district, which is blatantly false, as are many of the accusations being made by the members of the audience who have addressed the Board tonight. So facts are stubborn things. I wish you would stick with the facts instead of lying so much.
Any further Zoom? Any further Zoom?
I do not see any, Commissioner.
Okay. The Chair will now address, as called to the public. I have that right to be the last person to speak. I've sat here quietly, week after week, listening to a litany of allegations, bogus issues about three Commissioners running for reelection. I've looked the three challengers and their husband and their father and their friends in the eye from this seat as they've attempted time and time to discredit our good works, and I've never responded until now. The county did not spend the alleged $58,000 on an employee survey. The county spent $19,000. That's roughly a third, and it was purposely inflammatory by the Speaker. The Board has not been punished by SEMCOG by receiving $0 for Livingston County Roads at the Road Commission. In fact, for 2024, they expect to receive $11 million from SEMCOG. The Board has not closed the courts. We've not defunded the courts. We've not starved the courts. The 2024 budget approved for the courts was an increase of $1.3 million, and that's the Constitution talking. We cannot tell them how to spend it. They cannot tell us how much. For the record, I've never stolen or vandalized an opponent's political sign in my life, and I've had lots of campaigns. I find it incredible, the woman who accused me of serving only to go to higher office is married to an ex-Commissioner who actually attempted to do that, not once but twice. And I hear tonight that we should not take credit in our postcards for having the lowest millage rate. But I have a postcard from an ex-Commissioner that's very tall that took credit a long time ago when he was running for Commissioner also. That's all I have. Thank you. We go now, after a call to the public, to item number nine, Approval of Minutes. We have 9A, Meeting Minutes dated June 24, 2024; 9B, Closed Session Minutes dated June 24, 2024; and 9C, Meeting Minutes dated July 8, 2024. Can I get a motion on A through C? Motion, Gross. Second, Sample. Moved by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, it's approved unanimous. Item number 10 would be where we talk about tabled items from previous meetings, and there are none unless anybody wishes to remind me. Seeing none, zero. We're on to number 11, which is on the agenda still. Does anybody else have a report that they might like to give to the Commission tonight by a Commissioner? Seeing none, we'll proceed on to number 12, Resolutions for Consideration. 12A reads 2024-07-089. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Community Corrections Advisory Board, and it's brought to us by the Board of Commissioners. It's paired page 20 on your agenda. Sarah Applegate is the proposer. Do we need further elucidation by Sarah, or are we ready to vote?
Ready.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second, Deaton.
Thank you for that. Any wish for discussion, any wish for analysis or questioning? Seeing none, we'll go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero is what I've heard. We're at 12B. It's number 2024-07-090. It's a resolution approving the 2023 Deficit Elimination Plan, brought to us by our competent Treasurer Jennifer Nash, who has explained why this is merely a housekeeping event. May I get a motion?
Move, Helserman.
I hear both Helserman and Deaton as the movers and shakers.
I'll move with a second then.
Thank you. Ma'am Clerk, are you set?
Commissioner Helserman moved. Commissioner Deaton seconded.
Thank you. We have a good record. Does anyone need further elucidation, questions, or comment? Seeing none, we'll go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, passes. We're on to 12C. It's number 2024-07-091. It's a resolution to authorize a second quarter budget amendment to the fiscal year 2024 budget. It's brought to us by Fiscal Services and Ms. Arbanis, and we talked about this extensively at FAM. Does anybody wish any further question, further analysis, comment, or question?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Been a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion desired? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote kindly.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 12, lettered sub D. It's number 2024-07-092. It's a resolution authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2025 Child Care Fund Budget to the state of Michigan. It's brought to us by Juvenile Court, the proponents Debbie Shaw, and we've discussed in earlier committee.
Move the resolution.
Support Deaton.
Nakagiri motion, support by Deaton. Any questions, comments, or need for further input? Commissioner Nakagiri, you have the floor.
I have a couple of comments just for clarification. So I had concerns in committee regarding the second B further resolved, where they had a listing of all the positions that it impacted. I no longer have those concerns. The resolution speaks about positions that are already in place and the proportion of the salary for each of these positions that will be paid by the General Fund versus the Child Care Fund currently, and then proposed. It's actually very favorable to our budget. Our Finance Officer Cindy Arbanis had reached out to the courts and have concluded it is net favorable to the General Fund for approximately $410,000 a year. There is a question that I raised with regards to, as an example, the first position in that resolution is an intake hearing officer referee. Today, it's 100% General Fund, 0% Child Care Fund. It's proposed it'll be just the opposite, 0 General Fund, 100% Child Care Fund. That's a very favorable thing. So just to share one last tidbit, the Child Care Fund will, so when we say it's going to go, the salary and benefits are going to be paid 100% by Child Care Fund. I just want to make it clear that that is actually 75% because we get reimbursed from the state of Michigan at 75%. We have to pay 25%, but it's still a great deal. And I just wanted to share that information. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any further comment, analysis, question, or... Seeing none, another roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're at 12E on tonight's agenda. It's number 2024-07-09- It's number 2024-07-093. It's a resolution authorizing transmission of the approved 2025 to 2030 county capital improvement plan to the Livingston County Board of Commissioners by the Planning Department. May I get a motion?
So move Gross.
Second. Fiani.
Motion by Gross, second by Fiani. Any further comment? Chair recognizes Commissioner Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just want to, uh, express my gratitude to Scott Barb and Rob and Planning Department. This is a, uh, it's a significant document for the county. There's an enormous amount of work goes in there. We have some, uh, volunteers on this board. Uh, the chair, Bill Anderson, uh, has given us a lifetime of service to this county, quite frankly. And I just want to thank them all. They do a really wonderful job and, uh, want to commend them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I believe everyone on the board also echoes those sentiments. Commissioner Smith, thank you for bringing them forward. Any further? This is a voice vote. All those in favor of 12E kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine, zero is what I've heard. 12F is number 2024-07-094. It's a resolution authorizing the sheriff's office and the county of Livingston to apply for the United States Department of Justice Office of Community, Community Oriented Policing Services, fiscal year 24, Safer Outcomes, Enhancing De-escalation and Crisis Response Training for Law Enforcement Program Grant. So the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second Sample.
Moved by Commissioner Domas, seconded by Commissioner Sample. It's a sheriff department resolution. Does anyone wish to, uh, proceed with questions, analysis, comment or have any further input from the sheriff? Seeing none, then we'll move to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Nine to zero is 12F is approved. We are at 12G. It's a, it's numbered 2024-07-095. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of onboard media players for Let's Vehicles from Mesa Electronics, Inc. Brought to us by Let's, and the proponent is our director Greg Kellogg. It was discussed earlier in FAM. Does anyone need, uh, further question input?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Deaton and Commissioner Fiani picked up the fumble by myself. Appreciate that. Any further discussion or input? This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner, Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to, uh, 12H. Number 2024-07-096. It's a resolution approving updated Let's, L E T S, Let's Drug and Alcohol Policy, brought to us by the Let's and our good friend Greg Kellogg, the director there. Can I get a motion?
Move Helserman.
Support Gross.
Motion by Helserman, support by Commissioner Gross. Anyone wishes a presentation? Anyone wishes questions, comment, analysis? Seeing none, we'll move to oral, roll call, excuse me, oral voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, the voice vote passes 12H. We're at, uh, 12, letter aye. It's number 2024-07-097. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement for project management services for the renovation of the health department, brought to us by Facility Services. Can I get a motion?
Move Helserman.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Deaton. Any questions, any analysis, any need for presentation? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're on to 12, small letter J. It's number 2024-07-098. It's a resolution authorizing the addition of three full-time employees in the Emergency Medical Services, uh, brought to us by Director David Feltposh. Commissioner Domas has made a motion to move it. Is there a second?
Support Deaton.
Support by Commissioner Deaton. It was, uh, discussed at FAM and lower committees. Anyone wishing further presentation, further question or analysis? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote kindly.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are at 12, small letter K. It's number 2024-07-099. It's a resolution to realign categories within the Folleville EMS base project, brought to us by Emergency Medical Services and Director Feltposh. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution with the title being amended to read, "Resolution to Realign Budget Categories Within the Folleville EMS Base Project and to Authorize Purchasing a Generator from Michigan Electrical Services LLC and Signage from Signature Signs for the Folleville EMS Base Station, brought to us by Emergency Medical Services."
Is there any second?
Second Deaton.
I'm hearing, uh, second by, uh, Commissioner Deaton. Is there need of further questioning or presentation or analysis or comment by any commissioner? Seeing none, roll call vote kindly.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're at 12, sub letter L. It's number 2024-07-100. It's a resolution authorizing a contract with Lindhaus Associates for engineering and bidding coordination work on the proposed EMS bases, brought to us by Emergency Medical Services Director Feltposh.
So move Sample.
Support Gross.
Moved by Commissioner Sample, support by Commissioner Gross. Does any commissioner wish further presentation, question or analysis? Seeing none, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're at item number 13 on the agenda. It reads accounts payable reports sub A, claims dated July 22, 2024, and 13B payables dated June 29 through July 12, 2024. May I have a motion?
So move Gross.
Support Deaton.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Deaton. All those in favor of the motion that covers both 13A and B, kindly voice vote, uh, with the, uh, word aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, the voice vote is nine to zero with passage and approval. We're at number 14 on the agenda. It's our second call to the public. This one is approximately two minutes long and we'll start with any cards that may be turned in.
Coming. Mr. Ben Tasic from Genoa Township.
Mr. Tasic, when you're seated and comfortable, you may begin. Good evening. Uh, my name is Ben Tasic, uh, I'm from District 6, Genoa Township. 25-year resident of Livingston County and a veteran. Uh, I'm not here this evening for any political messages, but rather to thank you for your tireless service to the county that continues. This county continues to grow and be a community where many enjoy a life of serenity and safety. And I think that you guys have a lot to do with this, and I thank you very much. Don't necessarily agree with you on some of the issues, but I have to respect what a job is well done. I'm here to thank Greg Kellogg, the Director of Transportation, who does so much with so little to keep our buses running, to provide transportation for our employees, and most importantly, to see that Let's continues to grow and expand with a limited, and I mean unlimited budget. And finally, I, um, I asked Paul Hogan to join us this evening, but he's unavailable. He has a piece, he's doing a political rally in, in Maryland right now. So, uh, uh, maybe at the next meeting, we can have him here. Thank you.
I have no further cards.
That would be the end of cards for the room. Uh, do you see any hands raised on Zoom?
I do not, I do not have any commissioner.
No.
Oh, sorry. Now we, we do have a Steve W.
I get it. All right. We're on Zoom now for call to the public. Uh, Mr. Williams, you've got two minutes.
Well, Steve Williams, Marion Township, still here. And, uh, what I didn't get to continue before is that I, I also, I, it sounds like, it sounds like you guys take easy offense, but you know, you're actually paid to sit here and listen to criticism from your employers who include me and all the other taxpayers and registered voters in Livingston County. So I do take a little offense at some of the things that have been levied at these, at these three ladies, all of whom are college graduates, all of whom are extremely conservative. You know, my wife went to the most conservative college in the state of Wisconsin and grew up in the thumb and went to Junianna Baptist and grew up there. So if you want to, if you want to look it up, you're not going to, you're not going to find anybody more conservative. My daughter grew up with me at Cornerstone Evangelical Lutheran or Presbyterian Church, and, uh, you're not going to find a more conservative church. It has changed a bit with the change of leadership, but it's still very conservative, very pro-life. All these ladies have degrees, all of them have owned at least two homes, so they're very aware of taxes and the impact of taxes and how to manage their finances. They all have great credit ratings. Two of, all of them are Second Amendment supporters. Two of them are CPL holders. All of them have family members. Their fathers were all in the military. Their grandfathers were all in the military. They care and they spend time in a lot of different types of causes throughout the community. And unlike five, or no, six of the nine commissioners, they actually grew up in small towns. They are not, so they are not big city transplants or carpetbaggers, as they used to call them after the Civil War. So they're very aware of the ethics and of the values of this community. They're very conservative, they're very.
You have 15 seconds remaining.
And when I want to support my wife, I will support my wife, Commissioner Nakagiri, because that is what we believe in, in this county. And that doesn't mean just giving a woman a hand up after knocking her down like your recent guest seems to be.
Mr. Williams, you cannot address an individual commissioner. Your time is delayed here. You address the chair and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm finished.
Any further, uh, Zoom hands? Anyone sees?
I do not see any commissioner, thank you.
The chair will exercise its option to be the last to speak. From my research, less than four years ago, my opponent married and moved to Livingston County. After less than four years here, having never served on an elected board or as a government official, she's now decided she has the qualifications to run on Tyre County. By contrast, I've lived in this county for more than 40 years. I've provided service to many different people in many different ways. During the last 40 years, I've worked the events, I've flipped the pancakes, I've served the spaghetti, I've raised the funds, I've been the treasurer, I've been the secretary, I've been the president, I've been the cleanup crew. I've licked the envelopes, I've taken attendance, I've signed guests in, I volunteered. I've purchased hundreds of sponsorships, I've eaten thousands of rubber chicken dinners at charity events and I've bid at their auctions. And as a county commissioner, I watch over taxpayer funds to ensure they're spent wisely and responsibly. My opponent claims this board of commissioners needs a former loan officer with experience in developing budgets according to her latest postcard. My research into her finances shows extreme concern. My research shows a public record of a Detroit federal bankruptcy judge revealing that my opponent confessed under the penalty of perjury to her 100% failure to keep approximately 16 written promises to repay money owed. She broke all 16. The unsecured debt totaled over $358,000. That's 358,000 reasons not to let her anywhere near our county budget or bonds or borrowing. This is not evidence of fiscal responsible individual. I promised taxpayers I would live up to three things in my, that my parents taught me. I spend less than I, than we earn here. We save for a rainy day. We shun debt. I've kept my promise. Thank you. That brings us to the last part of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Which would be a motion to adjourn. I hear Commissioner Deaton has taken the bull by the horns and a second by Commissioner Fiani.
Second Commissioner Deaton, motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, voice vote kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero have it. We're adjourned at 7:29 PM.